The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If we could have the roll call, please.
Alderman Ted Grady.
I'm here.
Alderman Repella.
I'm here.
Alderman Nichols.
I'm here.
Alderman Eisenach.
I'm here.
Alderman Hammond.
I'm here.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
I'm here.
All are present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is the report of department head, staff, and consultant. We have the minutes and the communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through K and Communications L through Q.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Is Ted right? Second? Yes. Okay.
Did he forget to call Ted?
No.
I seconded it.
Haley didn't hear who had seconded it.
He was kind of quiet when he did it.
Item F is public comments, and there is no one from the public here this evening. Item G is the consent agenda. Are there any items that you wish to have separated? Alderman Sevanek?
As usual, Mayor, I'd like to just go through them.
Okay.
They're pretty much all cash, so. First item then, Mayor, is the Common Council minutes. I'd like for us to approve those for 12:05:22.
Second.
So motion, a second by Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item 2 is a change order. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. This is under the area of the Board of Public Works. This is a change order for Northeast Asphalt Incorporated, Contract Unit 2022-03 for street construction and rehabilitation in various locations. This is an add of $42,137.66. That change order is number 2 and hopefully the final.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item 3 is a payment. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is under the Board of Public Works, which is a payment to Northeast Asphalt Incorporated. This is for Contract Unit Number 2022-03 for street construction and rehabilitation in various locations in the amount of $99,689.66. This is payment number 3 and hopefully final.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item 4 is a request for neighborhood street signs. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we need to add the dollar amounts or anything into this?
The dollar amount will be based upon the actual...
Oh, that's right, on the number of signs and stuff.
Yep, actual cost to the city.
For some reason, my packet's not coming up properly here, so I'll have to take it from the paper here. With that, again, under Board of Public Works, this is for the Doty Island Development Group, or Doty Island Development Council Group, and to install neighborhood street signs on the Manassia side of Doty Island.
Second.
So motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I would just add that outlined from the recommendation of the Board of Public Works in that motion.
Sure.
But you don't have to put it up there, but that just makes more sense.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item 5 is a change order to Vinton Construction. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. This is from our special Board of Public Works meeting that we had today, and that change order is for Vinton Construction again. This is the Contract Unit Number 2022-02, the Street Reconstruction. This is for Airport Road, and this is an add of $81,424.63, payment number 2 and final.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could... Oh, did you have more, Stan?
I did.
Okay. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item 6 is a payment. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, our special Board of Public Works meeting. This payment is for Vinton Construction Incorporated. This is Contract Unit Number 2022-02, Street Reconstruction Airport Road, 80... Excuse me? Oh, $81,424.63, payment 5, final.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item 7 is a change order. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, special Board of Public Works agenda item. This was approved earlier, the change order to Vinton Construction Incorporated, Contract Unit 2022-01, Street Reconstruction. This is Main Street. This is a deduct of $3,159.88. This is change order number 1 and final.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Number 8 is a payment. If we... Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
As the mayor stated, this is a payment for Vinton Construction Incorporated, Contract Unit Number 2022-01, Street Reconstruction, Main Street again. This time, the amount is $5,058.31. This is payment number 3 and final.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote?
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item 9 is a recommendation to award. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. From our special Board of Public Works meeting, we would like to approve the recommendation to award Contract Unit Number 2023-01. This is for the... We're calling it the Brent Underground Stormwater Advanced Construction... Oh, 2 Advanced Construction Incorporated in the amount of $808,109.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of December 2nd through December 15th, 2022, in the amount of $937,248.55.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't know who that was. Okay, Ted Grady. Second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 8-0.
Item 2 is marketing of Winnebago County properties. I don't know if we have a motion or if we would like Director Schrader to discuss first. Apparently, I'm getting a pointy-tat, Director Schrader.
Thank you, Mayor. So earlier this fall, the Common Council did approve to acquire two properties from the county that were acquired on tax foreclosure. So basically, those properties did not pay their taxes for a certain portion of several years. The county would have provided them notice and then went into the foreclosure process to actually take those through the court system. All of the non-homestead properties, basically vacant sites or properties that have not had an actual home on it, would be offered to the municipality first at cost. And so that is what was approved at the fall meeting by the Common Council, was to acquire two of the four properties, being 127 First Street and 1220 Grove Street. Both of these, several years ago, have had houses on them, single-family houses, that were torn down. And there was an estimated cost to acquire 127 First Street at $37,272. I will note that that does not include the 2022 taxes, which are an additional $610. And then 1220 Grove Street for an acquisition cost of $17,183. So what we had looked at was basically to approve the acquisition of those through the Strong Neighborhoods Program with the hopes of marketing these sites for sale and putting a new house, new development on there to continue to add to the infill property as well as the City of Manassia tax base. So in front of you guys today, similar to other properties that are owned, is just looking at how to best market these sites for sale. We certainly have several different options. There are a few noted in the memo, and these will take place as soon as the city is officially the owner of those properties, which will likely be sometime early 2023. So we are working on getting a Phase 1 conducted for the 1220 Grove Street, just to make sure there wasn't anything out there from an environmental standpoint that would protect the city. But basic options, again, we can post the properties on the city website. This would likely be done regardless, as it's done with any property that we are looking to market. Solicite a listing contract with a Realtor. This likely would get the most amount of exposures because that is posted... Able to be posted through the M&Ls system, so if you search a Realtor site, Realtor.com, Zillow, or many others, that listing then will actually show up on that. Or market the sites in-house. Again, we can, you know, send this to potential builders, potential developers. We can install our own sign on the site for sale. But again, you just get a little bit less of a public viewing of that site. So basically, at this stage, we're looking for council feedback and a motion as to how to market these sites, as well as any conditions that may be placed on that lot sale. So, you know, should the property become tax exempt? Would we require a pilot payment, a construction period, any minimum home standards, sale price, and anything else? So that's what staff is looking for today.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, is there urgency in the matter? Does it need to be acted on tonight? Or is there time to come back with a recommended motion?
Certainly. So as noted, we do not own these properties yet, so we will likely not own them until middle of January. So there certainly is not an urgency. But anytime, again, we have a lot available, we want to make sure it's getting out there to people, because that's the goal of this, is to get that back constructed and increase housing stock and back on the market.
And you said that the city wouldn't close on these properties until sometime in early January?
Correct.
So in essence, we still have some work to do on that end, and I think what I'm hoping that we can do tonight is just talk about what we think are important... I mean, something that's really important to me is that we get a house on these lots. And so how do we ensure through what we're about to do that we get a house, that we get a house that conforms with the neighborhood and fits the needs for folks in the City of Manassia, among some other things? And so I hope we can have that discussion, and I would much prefer that instead of going through a litany of motions tonight, that we then come up with those ideas and then... I would also like some time to think about the tools that the Redevelopment Authority uses in marketing and selling and developing properties, to think about how we could work some of those into this process. And then postpone a decision, an official motion, until the second meeting in January. But I'll yield the floor for other folks' ideas.
Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's in the best interest of the city to purchase these properties now. So I'll make a motion that the City of Manassia purchase 304 Third Street and 127... Excuse me. 304 Third Street and 127 First Street as recommended by the Community Development...
And I believe we already did give authorization...
I wrote the wrong one down.
We already did give authorization to purchase them.
So what were the addresses?
127 First?
Yep.
And 1220 Grove.
So... 1220 Grove.
Director Schrader already has authorization from the council to purchase them.
Right, I realize that. So I'll just change that.
What he's looking for tonight is how should he sell them once we own them?
And if I could just finish my motion, and then... I'm sorry, I had the 304. I don't know why I wrote 304 down.
That's the top one.
Yeah.
It was recommended not to be there.
So anyways, I'll restart my motion that I think it's in the best interest of the city that we purchase 304... Oops, excuse me, 127 First Street? I'm just reading my old notes. And 1220 Grove Street as recommended by the Community Development Department, using strong neighborhood funds and have the department market these properties.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So my question now is, what does that mean? I don't know if Sam...
Well, we're not going to market these properties. It's really community development that's going to market these.
Sure.
And he's already stated, and Alderman Nichols has also stated, that they're hoping for the vacant property to be able to put a house on it. So I think that's the direction that we're looking at.
Director Schrader?
And there would just be any questions with listed sale price, if there's any home standards? I'm assuming we're kind of looking at the standard tax exempt requirements that we would put on anybody else. Land purchase agreements, reversion, yep.
So that would...
We're the only ones that can authorize the purchase of these properties, and basically, that's the first step as far as I see it. Otherwise, you know, someone else can come in right now.
It's already been approved to purchase.
These properties. No, some of the other ones.
In November, we gave authorization to purchase them. We will acquire them sometime in January, most likely. And what Director Schrader was looking for is some sort of idea of what the list price should be?
And I said...
And any requirements.
Using funds from the Strong Neighborhoods Program.
No, no, the list price to sell them.
To sell.
So...
Oh, well, I mean, you don't do all that in one motion. That all has to come back at some point, because things change over time. Market values change, everything. So I mean, I just would assume that when I say that he should market the properties, that he would bring it back. You know, saying that he has these properties, someone's interested.
Okay.
I think it's simpler than what we're trying to turn it into.
There's more discussion? It looks like there's more discussion.
Well, then, then we ought to send it to the Planning Commission and have them deal with it, and then make a recommendation to us.
I think that's...
It's not for us, the city here, in petty, if there's some tax exempt or, you know, that's a standard. You know, that's something we do all the time. I wouldn't ever want us to sell property unless it... Plus, it's in a neighborhood, so we're not going to be building a church or something there, so.
So Director Schrader does have kind of a standard process that he uses when he sells lots. I would assume we'd be using that same process. The question, more or less, is do we want to hire a Realtor or not? What the price is on each of those lots for the listing, and...
And as I stated, you market the properties, so...
You still have to put a price on it. Realtor's not going to list it unless we give him a price.
Well, what are we paying for it? That's your price.
$17,000.
Yeah, but it's just a single lot.
So...
Lots of money.
I think what would be best is to have Director...
There's no lots over there for $50,000 randy.
We probably should have Director Schrader bring back a listing agreement with... Is that what would be the best to do?
I guess the question is whether or not to list it in-house or list it through a Realtor. If the motion is current...
That has to come back before us, regardless.
That's what we're looking at, yeah, today. So what your motion was is for the department to list these, which would mean we can go out and do that as soon as we own these properties. And if there's any...
And how you choose to market it is how... Just like the property over at the sewage treatment plant, we hired a... Depending on whether you think you can market them or if we have to have a Realtor, we do both.
And that's what staff is requesting, that guidance. If you would like us to bring back a Realtor for consideration, and that's part of the sale price as well, if that is discussed here of here's the defined sale price, or this is the recommendation from that Realtor of what that sale price is.
Would you prefer a Realtor than the question would be?
The Realtor, again, is going to get more publicity on the site, because they have that marketed...
So that can be an amendment, if someone's got an amendment they want to offer. I'll amend my own motion then, that we...
Do we have a second on Stan's motion? I don't remember if we did.
Yeah, I've heard two of them over there.
Tom? Okay. Okay, let's have some other discussion, then we'll come back to you, Stan.
Okay, sure.
There's two other people here, so... Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I was prepared to provide... Offer a motion to move to postpone to the second meeting in January and direct staff to provide a recommended listing price and any other recommendations on how to list and market the properties.
So that's a motion to postpone?
That's a motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
With direction for staff.
Is there a second for that motion? Seeing none, the motion dies.
Basically, that's the same thing that I suggested, but the only difference is we're going to... I'm hoping to offer... I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm hoping to offer, or someone else, offer an amendment that we seek a Realtor.
So Alderman Nichols, did you have more discussion?
I just think it would be prudent to have a motion altogether that directs staff for what needs to be done, instead of going through a litany of amendments at this point. That's why I offered the motion to postpone with direction from staff.
So Director Schrader, do you take the motion that's on the floor, or is something would come back to council again after that?
I guess I would have to ask the clerk to reread the motion. The current motion is to acquire it using Strong Neighborhoods dollars and to have the department market the site. That, to me, does not say come back. That means go market the site for sale without a Realtor and do it internally, and we would...
Okay.
We would set a sale price, and that would, you know, whether or not that'd be too high, too low, but that would be what the direction is.
You want to do him first?
Yeah.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to have Sam find a Realtor to help with this process.
So there's a motion to amend to...
And bring back to council.
Yes, well, it would be to enlist a Realtor to that motion, which would need council approval then?
Yes.
To list with a Realtor, yes.
It wouldn't have to come back, though.
It would, because we'd have to approve the listing agreement at that point.
We have to approve that.
Was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second from... Was that you or Zeta? Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you. Director Schrader, does the Realtor need to know what sorts of... What sorts of things the council would like to have included in the listing agreement, and including the price and any other restrictions placed on the property?
Any, I guess, any restrictions that are above and beyond what we would typically go with, without guidance of those, I think it would be prudent to have that discussion today or a motion to that regards. Again, I'm assuming tax exempt is one that we would always have on. A sale price, again, we would, if we are enlisting a Realtor, we would have those discussions with them as far as what they believe the site is worth. But any, you know, specific construction period, home standards, if it needs to be a certain size house, anything of that nature, that should likely be discussed before we would bring back a listing contract. Now, that does not preclude the council from having a listing contract here for consideration and making an amendment at the next meeting, but it would just be a lot cleaner if the final listing contract that did come to the council at that meeting would be detailed as necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, with the motion and as is amended, is that offering to seek out a Realtor for the price, as well as if we were to sell it in-house, and you would present both options, or is it just seeking a Realtor? Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sevanek?
I guess I got thrown... We can't determine those kind of things. We're not qualified to do that. That's why I'm asking for you to do those things, to bring it back, talk with the Realtor, bring it back to the council, so then we can agree. Square footage or whatever, those things are guided by our codes, you know? No, I don't want them to only build a garage on it or something, or a parking lot, which I understand. You're probably covering all bases, but I think by delaying it another... Well, we voted on that, but delaying it just delays it for another couple more weeks, and then is there a possibility someone could come along and purchase this property in the meantime?
No.
No? What happens if the city doesn't buy these properties? It just stays with the county, and they don't try to market it themselves?
So the council has already directed staff to acquire these. The council, the Winnebago County Finance Committee has then accepted the city's offer, if you will, acceptance to acquire these.
They have accepted?
They have accepted that in early December. So basically, now we are just kind of working through the standard closing process, if you will. And then following closure, this is kind of what we're looking at, is what would you like to do? And I don't mean to put you guys in a rough spot, if that's what you're looking at. looking at. What, what I'm kind of looking at is, if we market this property for sale and we have an offer come in and the council says, "No, I don't like that offer because I want to modify these things," that's what we're trying to shy away from. We're trying to make sure we have all those answers as to what that potential buyer's going to ask or recommend or make an offer on before we actually put it out for sale because-
Aren't they just standard residential lots?
I, I've seen a lot of discussion at these, at these items on, on this committee and other committees, and that's where, again, if there is anything, that's what we're, staff is asking as we progress here. If there is something, let us know now. And if there's not, then we'll move forward.
I mean, what are you, like, we're requiring a two-car garage or, I mean, what are you-
And like you, like you had stated, that is already, a two-car garage is already in code. But if somebody submits, you know, says, "I'm going to construct a house," and they construct this house and it's 500-square-feet house, yeah, I'm making this up, and the council gets upset that that's not what we wanted, that's not what we thought we were going to get.
I thought that wasn't allowed anyways.
But those are the conversations. But as a buyer, you can put stipulations in, in, when you start to market the site. But once you start to market that site, your ability to make those modifications, especially with the Realtor involved, because then you're getting commissions involved in this and that. So that's where I, I'm just asking to lay out any concerns, questions that you guys might have. We, I mean, we can bring something back, but, but again-
Yeah, that's, I think, the best way of doing it is just bringing something back to us as from, from your department, your recommendations. I don't think we're qualified to say or decide what the price should be or whatever. It should be market value of those properties and I see the lights are on, so I'll let other people speak.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. So Sam, real simple, you mentioned different, a garage being built there. I still suggest that we, you sit down with the, with the real estate person and come up with something and then come back to us. I mean, houses built in Manassia are either a house, I mean, they've done a great job in proving that habitat houses, they've done, I mean, what else do you build? So, I mean, as long as you sit down with the Realtor and plot out how, the size, square footage and the garage and that type of stuff, bring it back to us, I'm happy with that. You've got, you know, two, three, two weeks or four weeks to get that done and then you can come back and get us done with it for us.
So what, what we are asking here about adding conditions to a listing is not a standard practice for a Realtor. It might be standard practice for us, but it's not a standard practice for a Realtor. Realtor has a buyer, they want to, they set a price, as long as they get their price, they don't care what gets developed, what happens with it. We're, I think, at a little bit different position, again, and, and we don't need to talk about this all night.
Right.
If this is enough information, we, staff can, you know, take this and come back with it. But we just want to make sure that, again, an offer doesn't come in and we don't like that offer, or they build something and we don't like what they build and it's, well, why didn't we, why didn't we add that? Why didn't we discuss this? So that's what we're looking to do.
Right, but we're going to put our trust in you, that you come up with something that you're not going to allow a, a 500-square-foot chicken coop, and then we can come back and say, "Well, we don't like that, Sam." So you come up with the requirements first and then we'll, we'll approve your, your thoughts. That's what I'm taking, that's what I'm thinking. You come up with them and then we'll approve them.
And that's fine. Again, staff can do that, but any Realtor is going to tell us, have less conditions, stop adding conditions. I could add conditions all day long-
Right.
And they're going to say, "Every condition you add is making it harder and harder to list this property."
One condition yet, so I don't know why that's such a issue.
Well, I mean, I'd say you come up with something and then come back to us. I'm sure you're not going to have a no-car garage type of house, you know? We trust that you're that knowledgeable. Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Just from reading what's here in front of us, it's, these are vacant R1, single-family residential lots. So right there, there's no nonprofit involved. So, based on the square footage of the property, what can the person build? It's, I, well, why do we, you should have all that in place, that should all be in place within the city, that what you can build on this lot is here. So I don't know why we're going around in circles here.
Right, I don't know either.
Thank you.
Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I appreciate you bringing this ahead of time to just kind of give the opportunity to share any apprehension or concerns going into this so it doesn't become an issue later down the road where somebody might not like the offer that's being put forward. So I do appreciate you bringing it forward. I think this is just, looking at the memo, it's pretty straightforward with what the vacant lot is. My personal preference would be not to seek a Realtor and do it in-house, but I'll respect what the collective decision of the body was for the recommendation, and I know you're just looking for guidance on the best way to do it, so later down the road, we're not dissatisfied with the approach that you're trying to take with it. But I guess my advocacy would just be our personal codes that we have as a city to obviously adhere to those and make sure that we're offering affordable housing for folks to be able to live in Manassia. So thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe there's an amendment on the floor. And I have further questions that do not pertain to that amendment specifically.
Okay.
So I'm looking for clarification as to where we are in the process here and how we're going to move forward with that amendment so we can move on with further discussion.
Okay, we have amendment on the floor to, something to the effect of enlist a Realtor?
Yes.
Do we have discussion on, any more discussion on that? Could we, all those in favor of the amendment? Are there any opposed to the amendment? Okay, we'll have to take a roll call vote on the amendment then.
And the amendment is to engage a Realtor, correct?
Yes. Yellow. That's a new color.
You pushed the neutral.
Did you push?
He just wanted the no packer colors.
Oh, that is-
He wanted packer colors for tonight, there you go, that's why he's wearing them too.
It has, it has a negative on it, so anyhow.
That's the stain.
But it should allow you to change it anyhow.
Yeah, I was trying to put the-
Yeah, we're doing it again. It was kind of weird that it-
Don't let me repeat, I apologize.
Now they're all green.
All your match, you're out.
That's kind of interesting anyhow.
I'm not doing anything.
It's fine.
But I pressed the minus last time and it gave me the wrong one.
Well, do it again and let's see if that happens. I'll watch it this time.
Why don't you push it for it?
No.
Oh, I can't do that.
No. I don't know why the colors are weird, but they are. But anyhow.
For the record, I did press the minus the first time.
Just one moment.
I like voting you guys, so bear with me.
I can't get the wording to show up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. It's coming up.
Yeah, now we got another one. What's the other one?
So, pull, pull your battery and put it back.
Oh, yeah.
Probably not. So anyhow.
There is a minus in there, you just can't see.
Motion carries eight zero.
Seven zero.
Seven zero.
Seven one.
Seven one.
One. Seven one.
Motion carries seven one.
We'll get there. Okay, so now we have the motion as amended. Alderman Nichols, did you have other questions?
Yes, I have further discussion. I know the predicament committees get into with properties they're marketing for sale through my experience on the RDA, and it happens. Director Schrader, what are, there was reference to standard conditions that the city usually places in listing agreements. Could you review what those are, please?
Each listing agreement is, obviously, stands on its own, but I would say the only standard condition for every one that we've done is the tax-exempt requirement.
Which is that it's-
That it, if it becomes tax-exempt, the property owner would pay a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of a val, of the value of the property.
Thank you for that. And do you have any other recommendations for the listing agreement with these, for these properties?
At this stage, I would say I can bring those back in a formal motion recommendation writing at the following meeting.
Okay, then I'll wait for that. Otherwise, I was prepared to enter those into the record today. For your consideration, I would like to offer that the house, that the proposed build be in conformance with the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood, and also to think about the possibility of a land purchase development agreement so that we understand and are on the same page with a potential buyer slash builder about what is proposed and what the result will be for that site. Thank you.
I think the other thing that we would, not, no, not normally.
This is the Planning Commission anyway.
This would not go to Plan Commission, it's a residential site. The other thing that we might want to consider is a time period that we would want something to be constructed on the lot. Would be the other thing.
Nothing they could sit on it forever.
It could be a neighbor that buys it too.
But the whole goal here is to get some, the whole goal here is to increase our tax base, so we'd want to see a house on it, we'd want to see a house built fairly quickly, and I would assume that the Realtor would help us set a price for those lots. Those are the things that I would expect to see on there if we wanted to do a development agreement, I guess.
Add that as another.
I don't think we want to add that right now, we would-
No, no, I'm saying-
Talk about that.
But we're trying to score this information.
Yeah. So those would probably be the things that would be included on that, that I would see. The house would have to be constructed to code, that's a given, which would include a garage and paved driveway and all those sorts of things, and the nonprofit requirement that we normally would put in there. The only thing that would be a little questionable is if there would be a minimum size, and I don't know that we necessarily want to do that. That's been a point of contention in some of the Lake Park Villas lots that we've sold, so. So what the motion directs Director Schrader to do is bring back a listing agreement, and he'll have those conditions that he feels are appropriate in that agreement. When we bring that back, it will probably be the second meeting in January, would be my assumption. Is that, that what you're seeing, Director Schrader? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
And just for everyone's information, the 304 Third Street lot, we did notice that the house next to it was for sale, and there was a recommendation that we should try to get that house to purchase it, and Director Schrader did reach out to the Realtor this morning and let them know that that lot was available through the county. That's the one that had Stanny's Grocery on it. Did you have some, are you the next item? Okay.
That was in the minutes or something, somewhere, I read that somewhere.
It, it's on there, that it'd be in the best interest of the neighbor to buy it, because it's not really a buildable property.
Ladies do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I called it Stanny, sorry.
Wrong neighborhood. Okay, item three is the Strong Neighborhoods Manassia Housing Program update. Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the Strong Neighborhood Manassia Housing Program update.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second, by Alderman Schmidt? Any discussion? Alderman Nichols? Oops, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you please explain the Manassia Affordable Assessed Value, or MAV, that will be incorporated into this update, program update?
Certainly. So for two of the programs, the curb appeal as well as the major renovations, we currently require a strict scrutiny by statute where the property owner would have to or could not spend more than 30% of their gross monthly household income on house-related expenses. So that would be kind of this income qualification to be allowed to even apply for this program. In some individuals, this automatically will throw them out because they are over that 30%, and I believe what we have found is a lot of individuals actually do not like to provide their personal financing. So while we've gone through the process and we've talked to a lot of applicants through this process, it gets to the point of actually applying and they opt out. We believe this may be one of those reasons for that. In addition, it's a lot of personal documentation, again, that, that staff is going through, and I think that can be uncomfortable for, for both staff as well as the applicant. So one of the things we are looking at is, is kind of defining a ceiling where that income would automatically be qualified, where that property would automatically be qualified without going into the details of that personal financing. So what we had looked at, we looked at several different programs throughout the state as well as looked at several different options. The Manassia Affordable Assessed Value rate is kind of what we defined it as, is basically derived from the HUD program. So HUD puts out annually a housing trust fund homeownership value limit, and basically what that is, is looking at the affordability of the region, and, and they put this out every June of each year. So with that, we are looking at that as being something that is defined by HUD. It is defined as the affordable purchase price of the, of the median value of the region, and so it's, it would be a, a number that there's no interpretation from staff or from, from others that, you know, the value is different. So other options that we were looking at were defining, defining that household income based upon a median, median income and calculating out a possible mortgage based upon household income. And again, that, that adds to a lot of discrepancies of interest rates or down payments or other items there that we kind of wanted to shy away from. So that's kind of the, the basics of that, that income qualification. We would also add that any rental property, so that concurrently apply for the curb appeal, that house would have to be under that, so if it was above that, that would no longer be qualified for that program. And then, in addition to that, properties that are still over that MAV rate could still qualify, but at that token, the city staff would actually review the 30% household income. And, and again, this is only one of the many qualifications, so staff would still do a full rubric on this, whether it be in-house for the curb appeal or the housing authority reviewing a major renovation. And so what that means is, we're basically saying, yes, you're eligible, but the project still has to stand on its own, looking at the household need, the age of the house, the neighborhood need, and all those other things that are listed out in that rubric.
So the MAV is a number defined by HUD or set by HUD that defines affordability for a region? for a region?
Correct.
And it's a ceiling, not a floor? A number, the assessed value?
Yes.
Okay. HUD sets their rates—or their number on June 1st of every year. Menasha runs on a January-through-December calendar, so how will we account for that difference?
That can either be done either way. It can be the current house ownership value limit, as it currently is there, or we would just view this as an annual program, and as of 1/1 of '23, we would look at the 6/1 of 2022 value for the entire calendar year. And then subsequent years, again, would be the June value of the previous year.
Have you decided—if this is approved tonight, have you decided which method you'll choose?
We are likely looking at just keeping it consistent throughout a calendar year.
So for 2023, you'd use the June 2022 number?
The June—yes, correct.
Thank you.
I think Alderman Grady had his first. But—all right, I'll go. I was just going to say, as a member of the Housing Authority, I just want to say I appreciate the work that Director Schrader put into it. We had a lot of good discussions for these revisions, and one of the big takeaways was trying to get more folks eligible to actually participate and utilize these—this program to be able to improve the housing stock here in Menasha, improve their—just their well-being and living by being able to make those improvements on their home. One thing is, there's a lot of barriers sometimes with the paperwork and the things that you need to turn in in order to access these programs. So kind of slimming that down really helps homeowners, I think, be able to utilize these resources, but I think it's also going to save our staff time as well, which I think is really important. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the work that you put into this.
And I will throw out that our—our planner, Farah Yang, is a tremendous addition to our team last year, and—and she has really taken this program, so I cannot take any credit, really. That's all—all her.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, this is a very important program and a good program for the city. I realize it is still in its infancy because we keep changing things constantly with this program, which—for the better, for the worse, I don't know. But one thing that I have a problem with is the red lines under the appealing, where now grievances can come to the council. I feel that we appoint these committees for a reason, and the reason is because we feel that they're qualified and can make a decision. They can either say yes or no. I agree with the extension, which is a fine thing, but to a point, I don't want this stuff to keep coming back to the council. We have an established committee that can handle all of this, and then next, we're—we're going to be micromanaging who can and who can't apply. So if this keeps developing into all these other red line things, I'm having issues with it. So I would like to strike the—the red line in the appeals. Thank you.
So there's a motion, correct? To remove the sentence that says, "Any grievances can be appealed to the City Menasha Common Council meeting during public comment. If desired, the council can direct staff to then place item on a subsequent council agenda." It's on page 11—bottom of page 11.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there discussion on the amendment? Do you have more, Tom, or not?
No.
Alderman Nichols.
What is the current appeals process?
So there would be no appeals process from a Housing Authority decision. So the appeals process that we put in place last year—so if you can recall, so originally curb appeal as well as major renovation were both reviewed by the Housing Authority. Again, in order to get more applications and have a quicker turnaround for these applicants, we added in a—that curb appeal is strictly a staff review. So should staff deny a project, the appeals process that was put in place last year was that applicant may request an appeal to the Housing Authority. We do have a form, a $50 fee, and they are required to kind of list out why—why they would need approval and their documentation along with that.
And how is the $50 established?
It was established by the Common Council last year.
Is there a—a limit as to what that fee can be? I know for some things, we can't—the city can't charge more than the actual cost of the service provided. Do we know what a number could be?
So I—I believe—if I can recall, last year, we had a lot of discussions around what that number might be, and we certainly did not want it to be too high where it was—it was—where no one would apply for it, because we certainly want to make sure people are heard, and if they feel they are correct and staff was wrong, we want to make sure that is a possibility. I will say that the $50 likely does not cover staff time.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote just on the amendment.
Motion carries seven one.
So we have the program as amended on the floor. Alderman Sevanek.
Adam, I kind of want to go back to the appeal process, and I guess I want to look at a second component of that, and that is, staff looks at the information. They don't feel it's eligible, so this—any individual can appeal it to the Housing Committee, right? What happens if the Housing Committee ties? Is that a—is that a—a no then? Consider it to be a no? And so it ends there. Therefore, what was just done meant it cannot go forward anywhere else, that the appeal process is actually within the Housing Committee. Period. And once that's done, that's—that's it. That's why we created that committee. Okay. I want to piggyback, if it's okay, kind of on some of the things that Alderman Nichols was talking about—the—the MAV, and I kind of like the fact that the people have to provide the application and show their income and other things, but—because I don't know anything about the MAV. I don't know what the chart is, and when I look at stuff that comes from the federal government, their numbers always seem to be out of whack big time, like average home is $500,000 or something like that, and incomes are crazy. So I want—Becky kind of hit on it a little bit. There's a HUD regional rate. So when you're saying a HUD regional rate, is that for the greater Oshkosh, Nina, Menasha area? What is the regional rate?
So the Winnebago rate is based upon the—the Fox Valley, and the Calumet County side is based upon Appleton, Calumet. So they do not get specific down to the Menasha. And I would put you—refer you guys down to the—the map, the Christmas map of—kind of at the end of the packet.
Holiday one?
The holiday one, and those are those rates. So for the Winnebago side, it was the assessed value rate of 203,000, and then the Calumet side of 255,000.
Got the wrong one. There we go. Okay.
Yep. And the other thing that we're—we are looking—if—if this does get approved, that staff is looking at—hopefully doing—we've heard about targeting neighborhoods. So this kind of also defines where those areas would be that we would target, and so we could do some direct mailings to those areas because they already—the property itself already qualifies. What their project may be, still may not, but the assessed value does.
Okay, so that addresses—oh, I thought it was M-A-V. It's M-A-A-V. Okay, so—and I looked at that, and most of the area is kind of in the greenish area, but—but that's not addressing income. It's only addressing the value of those properties or home, right? So—so a multimillionaire kid owned a $125,000 home but yet qualified for having their home fixed?
A multimillion-dollar individual qualifies now. If—if they make a million dollars and their household income in a year is less than $300,000, because of that strict scrutiny of the 30%, they would qualify. Now, depending on their—they're home and their project and things of that nature, they may still fall out from a rubric standpoint, but they would technically still qualify from the income standpoint.
Okay. And then also, too, even like the Affordable Care Act, people that are extremely wealthy but may not have a regular income—it's based on income—but they could be worth $5 million will still qualify. So I'm wondering—I—you know, I was trying to gear this towards people that needed help because they're not making what City Hall makes. So it's—to me—not fair then, the way this is—the—this rubics is set up, and now—now you're striking that—
This is—
—that area.
This is actually making those properties more eligible.
Right. I realize that, but I wanted to make it eligible for people with less.
And that's what I'm telling you.
You think—
This opportunity makes it for those individuals more eligible. If—if they're currently house—struggling, they're paying 32% of their household income, but they have a $100,000, $150,000 house, they don't qualify for these current funds because of the strict scrutiny of the 30%. This actually makes that property owner eligible.
How about if the individual has no mortgage, or is—does that fit into your rubics?
Yeah, so if it's currently that they don't have a mortgage, then they would likely automatically qualify for that 30% by strict scrutiny. This—if—if they don't have a mortgage and—and the house is underneath that 203,000, they would automatically qualify.
Okay. Got it.
Alderman Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say, Alderman Sevanek, I shared your concerns at the Housing Authority, and I—at first was a little staunchly against it because of that—the—it's unfortunate that those that are wealthy exploit systems that are there to help those that are not wealthy, but this kind of breaks those barriers of that 30%, which is kind of the classification or the rule of thumb pertaining to housing—affordable housing. And in my line of work that I do outside of the council, that does create barriers, and there's a lot of footwork that has to go into that to be able to help folks, be able to actually access affordable housing. So I think this is a unique way to provide more opportunity for more people, but I do share that sentiment to the fullest that it is really, really unfortunate that there are opportunities for those that are wealthy to take advantage of and exploit systems that are not for them. But I think in good faith, it's good to not let a few apples ruin it for the whole batch of—you know, I said that saying wrong, but nonetheless, you get where I was going with that. I don't think we should not proceed forward with this if we can help a majority of people get ahead in life, and I—I share the same thoughts that you have with that.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote. Do you have more?
I wanted to thank Sam because he accidentally heard, "Mayor, the door was locked," and forgot to get me something, and he did a lot of work, and unfortunately, that work is not going to be used tonight because of the amendment that was offered earlier. So I do appreciate your time in that. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote as amended.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first one is ordinance 20 related to polling places. Is there a motion? Clerk Carl Kramer, did you want to share with us why we're doing this?
Yes, so this ordinance eliminates Clovis Grove School as a polling place for Districts Five and Seven and moves those voters over to UWO Fox Cities. The school district has not renewed our contract to allow us to use Clovis as a polling place any longer, so we did explore other options.
Alderman Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for ordinance 20-22 and ordinance amending Title II, Chapter One, Section 2-1-3 of the Code of Ordinances, City Government Elections, Polling Places, introduced by Mayor Marcus.
There's a motion and a second. I just wanted to add, the school district has been a great partner, but there are security concerns with a lot of people going in and out of a school, so if we could find another location, they highly encouraged that, and we were able to work with UWO and have it at that location, and that's really why we're doing it. It's not because they didn't renew our contract, it's that they would prefer to have a more secure situation for students. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Will the voters affected by this be notified via mail before the 2023 cycle?
Yes, they will be.
Thank you. And will appropriate signage be at the new site about where to enter, where to park, all of those things?
Yes.
Thank you.
Typically, we also have a sign at the old site that said, "This is no longer a polling place if you have quest—" Does it say, "If you have questions," or does it say where it is? It would say then, "The new site is." Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is appointments. There are three reappointments to the Park and Rec Board if you want to take them singly or as a group. Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take them singly. Mayor admitted a motion, or let's accept the mayor's reapportment of Richard Sturm to the Park and Rec Board through 1001 of 2023.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady, and Alderman Grady, is there discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alderman, you just leave your light on. Tom, if you'd like. Ted? We'll get this right eventually.
All right. At this time, I'd also make the motion for the mayor's reapportment of Timothy Hale to the Park and Rec Board through 1001 of 2024.
Is there a—there's a motion and a second from Alderman Grady and Alderman Grady. Discussion. Seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please. I—I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. The motion carries.
And the last, Mayor reapportment of Tom Marshall to the Park and Rec Board through 1001 of 2025.
Is there a second? So a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Did—did you say nay?
No.
Oh, okay. Moving on to the next page. It's too bad we had to do a third page. Do we have a—oh, any from—from the public, and there is no one from the public here. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities campus assists the city of Menasha with video recordings of city meetings. Menasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other— agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Menasha issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.